Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, April 23rd, 2015, regular session of the Xenia City Council. We've been in special sessions since 6:15 discussing the proposed update to the 35 Expansion Project and other topics as well regarding bike path modifications and such. Now, we're ready to begin, and we will start this evening with an invocation by Mr. Eric Woodworth from Lighthouse Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Vice President. If you would rise with me for the invocation and pledge, please.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father, we come before you and we just humbly ask your guidance and your wisdom on this meeting and on these folks. We thank you for each of the men and women who represent our city, and we just thank you for the work that they endeavor to do. God, we ask again that you would just bless them, and we thank you for this opportunity to meet and to discuss our city, and we ask this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Woodworth. And Vice President, may I have roll call, please?
Vice President Long.
Here.
Councilman Cowt.
Here.
Councilman Lauterback.
Here.
Councilwoman Mills.
Here.
Mayor Bayless.
Here.
President Engel.
Here. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilman Lauterback from tonight's meeting. He's on vacation.
Thank you. Have a motion to excuse Councilman Lauterback. Sir, second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills. Discussion on the motion, please. Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cowt.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now, may I have a motion, please, for approval of minutes for the April 7th, 2015, Special and Executive Session?
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Smith. Second, please.
Second.
Second by the mayor. Discussion or question on these minutes, please. Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cowt.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now, motion, please, for the April 9th, 2015, Regular Session.
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Smith. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills. Discussion or question on these minutes, please. Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cowt.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
At this time, we have a special presentation, our Quarterly Economic Update by Mr. Brodsky, our Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Start off with our recruitment and retention. Through the State of Ohio or Dayton Development Coalition, we received a total of six leads, two building and four site requests. We were able to respond to one building request. The other one required a building that was already FDA-approved, which we do not have in the city of Xenia. Of the four sites, two of them we were able to respond to, the other two required rail. I might also mention, one of the trade publications that we advertise with is called "Expansion Solutions," and as part of our advertisement, "Expansion Solution" goes to most of the major trade conventions throughout the country during the year. For example, they just got back from the National Plastics Expo that was held down in, I think it was in Tampa. As part of our contract, they then send us qualified leads. In fact, just yesterday, I received those leads, and this isn't a list of folks that attended the show. These are people that they have spoken with, and they say, yes, we intend to expand our operations within the next year, two years, five years. This is the area we are looking to expand. So we can then use those contact lists, and we will be sending out information about the city, hoping to attract them as well. That's actually a pretty low-cost alternative because they go to about eight to 10 shows a year, and I can tell you it would cost us far more to go to all of those shows and probably with similar or not even as good results as far as getting those lists. Please be looking in the next couple of weeks. Buckeye Research and Manufacturing is a small machine shop, basically, currently located in Beaver Creek Township. They were not able to expand there. We had some discussion with them about various options, and they have purchased the former CMS Number Two Building, or a lot of us know it as the Warrior Building, on Lower Bel Brook Road. They are in the process of moving into that building. They anticipate sometime the first half of May doing an open house ribbon-cutting-type event, and they would certainly like to have as many city officials and other folks there as possible. They are a GE Aviation supplier. They are growing. Small shop now, they're only about eight people. They're already looking to hire two more, and the whole reason for this move is because they want to continue to grow. Very interesting company. Also had some discussions recently with Tribe Archery. Tribe is a company that makes bows, both recurve and compound bows. Right now, they are co-located with T-Jar Innovations, and they're building on Cincinnati Avenue. Probably several years away from them growing into their own facility, but one of the things that they would like to do is get better-known in Ohio. Is that if you go out west, they're very well-known; in parts south, they're very well-known. I could tell you, last year, while I was on vacation in Myrtle Beach, I happened to have a t-shirt that said "Tribe Archery" on it, and someone stopped me on the beach and said, "Hey, Tribe Archery, I really love their bows." So, we have been discussing ways that we can assist them in getting the word out. One of the things that we're working with the City Manager's Office on is at a future First Friday event, actually doing a bow demonstration. Obviously, safety is our primary concern, so we're going to be scoping out areas where they could set up and do such a demonstration safely. Very interesting company. They have a number of very large contracts with some sporting goods stores and are consistently looking to grow that, and we're very glad that these are two gentlemen who are natives of Xenia, and in fact, on their promotional brochures, they even say, "You'll find us in tree stands and in the forest, but we call Xenia home." So it's very important to them to be able to grow here. I've talked in the past about the DPNL Site Certification Program. When I gave my update in January, we were about to have a visit from the sites' location consultants that DPNL had hired. We did do that, and based on that and the information that we submitted, they have asked us to go to the final phase of certification. That's going to require a lot more work, meeting with Mr. Arnovitz next week to discuss some of this. There is going to be some financial implications. They need a Phase One environmental report on the property. They need a basic geotechnical report on the property. These are not exceedingly expensive items. I mean, we're not talking tens of thousands of dollars, but we are talking thousands of dollars for some of these, and we're going to discuss ways that the city might be able to help Mr. Arnovitz offset some of those costs. Obviously, it's in our benefit to have these shovel-ready sites in our community. I might add that the county is taking the OVCH site through this process as well. They were also asked to do that final submittal, so they're going through that process as well. DPNL just announced last month that they're doing Round Two for additional sites, and after several conversations with the listing agent, we are also going to try to take the Bells site in the industrial park through this same process. That means if we're successful, we will have three certified shovel-ready sites in the city of Xenia. One of the other nice components of this is that as part of this whole process, DPNL is going to be putting up money to help advertise that these are shovel-ready sites. Then I can tell you that quite often, in fact, on one of the site requests, it helped that we had gone through this process because along with the request for sites, they had a very specific request for information, or RFI. It was very comprehensive. We got the lead from the state on a Wednesday afternoon. They wanted the RFI submitted that Friday. If we did not have all of the information that we had obtained going through this process, there is no way we would have been able to get all of that information to the state in time. So it's, and that's one of the reasons they do it, is so they know they can get sites where the information is there, the due diligence is done, and they can then move very quickly on their selection. Few downtown projects. I know a lot of you think I've already seen at Ha Ha Pizza. We're very excited that they have finally been able to open their doors, and they are have been very well-received. I've been there a few times, and it has been very busy. One Bistro, and they were here again today. They finally got through all of the paperwork that's necessary so they can now actually start work on the interior renovations of the building. We shall be seeing that here fairly soon. In the meantime, they do continue to bring their truck here every Thursday. Again, today, very well-received. It was very busy. Mary Crockett in my office last week met with a developer that has done numerous projects in the over-the-Rhine neighborhood in Cincinnati, primarily using historic tax credits. He is looking to expand his horizons. When he contacted the state and said, "Hey, do you know other communities that might be good for us to look at?" They specifically mentioned Xenia. This gentleman came down, spent the afternoon going through our downtown, said that there are a lot of possibilities here. He was very pleased with our buildings and is going to take a look at the potential of doing some projects in one of our buildings. Interestingly enough, one of his comments was, "Glad to see you have a vacant building registration. You need to make it more expensive." Essentially, so some of our property owners will have more of an incentive to actually sell their property. Have also been meeting with one of our downtown property owners who's pretty close to going ahead and doing a historic tax credit project for upper-floor development, and we're meeting another one next week that is also going to be looking at doing that. So we are getting a lot more interest in doing some of those upper floors. A lot of that is because of the de-cap program that we had in place. Actually, today, met and started our planning for what we call a business walk. A business walk is where staff and trained volunteers and resource partners such as utilities or the Chamber of Commerce, some others, will do kind of a one-day blitz to a number of businesses. We're probably looking at the downtown, midtown area, trying to hit all of those businesses, not to do a deep business visit like we would with an industrial partner, for example, but to be able to sit down, tell them a little bit about what's going on in the city, let them know that there is a point of contact if they have any issues, and find out if there are some issues, and then go back and see if there are a number of businesses facing similar issues. Is there a way that we can help them? We anticipate doing that probably this summer, sometime in the July-August timeframe. And then, of course, two weeks ago, council approved the purchase agreement with Genesis Development for our project across the street. As we mentioned then, a lot of moving parts and pieces to this, but those discussions continue with our partners to get that project done. And then a quick update on some of our other grant-related projects. The targeted brownfield assessment that we started on the AV Building and the Collier property, which is behind it, we did get both the Phase One and asbestos reports back based on that and a discussion that we had with the state. They are going to do a limited Phase Two study of those properties. Certainly, it's not going to be a complete Phase Two as we had to do out at that Hoover and Allison, but it will be a real good start. We had $50,000 that we gave the state a couple of years ago for Brownfield Action Plan. They're allowing us to use that money to do some additional work on the Phase Two, and that will give us a real good idea as to what we might be looking at as far as having to remediate that property so we can then put those properties back into productive Close to wrapping up our project by the water treatment plant. Council did approve the purchases at its last meeting. We closed on the final two properties last Friday. The asbestos inspector was out there today doing samples and whatnot, so as soon as we get the asbestos report back, we will be able to advertise for the demolition. We expect that probably the end of May, beginning of June, and then once those are down and we've planted some trees and other things in the site, that project will be complete. The last thing I wanted to mention, too, we did hear word the beginning of the week from the state, the OVCH project, that Clean Ohio project. We expect that we will receive the covenant not to sue, which is the final document that we look for, probably within the next week or two. I asked our consultant working on HNA if they had heard something similar, and they said probably within the next month we should be hearing back on HNA as well, so. And then I did, in the report I gave you, just as an FYI, February, which is latest date, month that we have reporting for the city, our unemployment rate was down 5.7 from 6.5. The county's at 4.8 percent. The MSA's at 5.3. State of Ohio is 5.6, so we've been pretty much holding steady with what the state or the region has been doing for close to a year. Employment, total employment is up, total unemployment is down, which means that we are trending in the right direction. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I got one real quick, and it's not just to you, anybody, there's the answer. Do we know what's going on with that space that used to be Miami Tavern? Is that being remodeled?
It's still under redevelopment for Aspen Dental. They had some kind of delay. I don't know what the issue was, but I was told by R&amp;D Investments that they have signed a lease there, and there has been some new activity there, so I've seen some internal work going on.
I've reached out several times to the corporate office of Aspen Dental, asking if there's any way we can assist, and I'm going to guess the answer is no because they haven't responded to me.
And I know it's a new facility, but Walgreens, are they in any jeopardy of closing that store? I know they're doing some consolidations and...
Corporately, Walgreens is closing 200 stores across the nation. I have been looking. I cannot find where they have listed yet, what particular stores they will be closing. From some various publications I've read, I think the guess, and that's all it is, is a guess, is that they will be closing stores in cities where they have multiple locations. I mean, keep in mind, it's 200 stores, but they have, I believe it's about 8,000 stores nationwide, so as a percentage, that's actually relatively small closure. Certainly, we hope that our store stays open, but once we learn, we will let council know.
I know, I know a Walgreens manager, not the one in Xenia, and they've done like a lot of restructuring within their management, also their regional managers and whatnot, and I mean, he doesn't think that, because I asked him, he doesn't think this one's going to close.
Other questions, comments?
Did we have any indication from either SolarFlare or BP that they were going to be closing up?
BP, none whatsoever. You know, with SolarFlare, honestly, they had kind of told us that they had been struggling a little bit. That was about a week prior to them saying that they were closing. You know, certainly, we did everything we could to try to drive traffic there. I could tell you, I had a number of folks that I took to lunch at SolarFlare, and interestingly enough, most of them said, "Hey, this is a great place, and I'm going to bring my spouse back here, or I'm going to come back here." You know, it's hard to say exactly what the issue was. Certainly, it's unfortunate because I think they did a nice job. They had very good food. Some of it is probably that location. Obviously, it's been hard to get traction, but...
I think BP was a surprise to us all.
Does the gentleman that ran the BP, does he own that building, or does someone else own it?
My recollection is that they bought that property. I don't think it's a corporately-owned facility that he managed. I believe he actually owned that and just had a contract with BP for, you know, for the gasoline.
There's a lot of renovation going on there, though. I saw a lot of cars today.
Yeah, that's why I'm kind of wondering what's...
What's next, yeah?
We'll certainly investigate it, and if we can get some answers, we'll let you know.
Can I ask a question? Question solved, sir. Go ahead. Were they recipients of any grants or loans?
They did receive a loan from the city, as is our normal practice. They did have to sign personal guarantees, and I have been in contact with the owner who assures me that, yes, they know that they have to make good on that loan, and we'll be meeting here in the very near future to try to set up some payment plans, so. I mean, certainly, we don't want to, you know, put these folks out on the street, but this is taxpayer money, and they are aware of that and do have every intention to pay it.
I just had one more. Barco, have we been in contact with Barco recently since the whole transition has taken place?
We actually had been in contact with them several times and have requested a meeting with the new ownership or the new management, both myself and my counterpart at Green County. And what they've pretty much said is, yes, we do want to meet with you, but we need to kind of get the transition done first. So we do fully expect that. They've always been very good about meeting with us. I think it's just a matter of they're working through their internal transition right now, and in fact, one of the senior managers that we typically meet with has had her duties expanded, and she's handling some functions, not only for the Xenia location, but several other locations in the Midwest, so it's becoming even more difficult for her to find the time, but we will be sitting down with them hopefully in the near future.
Anything on the Super Value Building?
Spoke with the owner's rep about two, three weeks ago. He said they did have some prospects, but nothing that was solid enough to engage the city as far as discussions on incentives yet.
We've seen an increase of activity in terms of tour groups and such at the facility, so. But again, they've been very, they've kept things pretty close to the vest. They really have not, not requested or when we've offered, not accepted any, you know, any marketing or assistance from the city.
Other questions, comments, please? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This time, we have an opportunity for audience comments. If anyone would care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please feel free to do so. Please step to the podium and provide us your name and address. Limit your comments to four to five minutes, please. Any Boy Scouts in the audience who would like to address the Xenia City Council this evening?
I wish that the troop, we have two Boy Scouts here from Troop 140, and they are working towards a badge, and we would love to know what badge you're working towards. You know, if you walked up there together and you could say your name and say what badge you're working for, and then everybody will know.
My name is Davion Clemmons. I am the ASPL of Troop 140.
Andrew Taylor.
What badge are you working towards?
And we're working towards the merit badge of citizenship in the community.
Excellent. I see that you're both Second Class Scouts with your Arrow of Light Award. Have you been to camp?
I, we have. We've been to Camp Birch, Woodland Trails. You remember any of them?
How much around the...
Oh, okay. All right. And we've also traveled to like the Grand Canyon to go backpacking. It's pretty nice.
Excellent, and your troop is located at?
St. Bridget.
Very good.
And how big is your troop?
Our troop consists of...
Approximately?
Approximately, I think it's nine now, including the new scouts. I'm going to assume nine.
Nine?
Okay. Very good. Well, thank you very much for coming and speaking to us this evening.
Oh, you're welcome.
Feel free to come back again. There are other citizenship badges to be had as well. Thank you. Would anyone else care to come and speak to the Xenia City Council? Provide us your name and address, sir, please.
My name is Mark Jarvis. I live at 715 Mount Vernon Drive. We live in the United States of America, okay? And the last meeting that we had, that you guys had, I wasn't able to attend, but I did watch it, and John and Dale, the only two that said that you guys, that we could speak for five minutes, okay? There's a sign that says we can speak for five minutes, and I don't understand why two minutes is not really a fair time for people to speak. I don't, I don't feel that at all, it's fair at all. I think that people should be able to speak for five minutes, and they should be able to speak their mind, and it's America, and they should be able to say what they want. And I feel that, I know come November, there's some council members that are going to be up for reelection, and there's some that are, at least four that I know of, and two of them, I definitely will get my vote, and two of them will not get my vote, and I'm very, want to make that clear, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please? Seeing none, moving to reports of committees. Councilman Long, please, Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. The Xenia Planning and Zoning Commission met on April 2nd. I was not able to attend, but our vice chair, Matt Bennett, took the helm of that meeting. They had two items on the agenda. The first was a rezoning of 6.5-acre parcel located adjacent to 1094 Cincinnati Avenue from B4 Planting Shopping District to I-1 Light Industrial District filed by Dayton Xenia Auto Parts, and that was endorsed and will be coming before City Council for another public hearing later on in May. Their second item was a request to modify the landscaping plan for a portion of West Park Square PUD filed by BC Wood Properties, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did endorse that landscaping plan with one condition, that any new trees being planted have at least a two-inch diameter at the breast height, and I don't see the city, I think the city planner left, I would not, they haven't, I can't answer any questions about those items, but I can get any questions answered for you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Councilman Long and Planning and Zoning, please? Seeing none, Mayor Bayless and Mr. City Manager, mayors and managers, please.
The mayor and I had the privilege of attending mayors and managers at Sinclair Community College. No formal business other than introduction of the new, I guess the term is Executive Director for mayors and managers. A nice presentation from the Sinclair president, and it's interesting to note that Green County provides the second-most student enrollment to Sinclair outside of Montgomery County, and I think 3,300 students, something like that, so. Very nice presentation. They're doing a fantastic job. We're very, very, very fortunate to have that type of academic facility right in our backyard.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the mayor or city manager? Seeing none, Councilman Lauterback is not with us this evening, so we will postpone his report until a later date, and now we will move to items from City Council and mayor. Does any one of my colleagues have any items to bring forward this evening, please? Seeing none, reports of city offices. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, Council. Just two brief items this evening. First is a request for authorization to enter into a contract with John R. Jurgensen Company of Springfield, Ohio, to complete the 2015 Street Program at a not-to-exceed amount of $613,283.33. Earlier this year, staff provided a detailed recommendation for this year's street rehab program. Authorization, as requested, will allow staff to advance this year's project as part of the County Engineers Bit Program.
Thank you very much. We have a motion, please, to authorize the city manager to enter into the contract.
So moved.
Don't everyone jump at once. Mayor made the motion, Vice President seconded it. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Second item this evening, as with all other, of all of their projects, the Ohio Department of Transportation is requiring the city to execute a consent and cooperation agreement in order for a very small portion of US 68 located within the city limits to be included in a resurfacing project scheduled to start this season. This agreement does not commit the city to any payment for the project, and only, again, a very small portion of Houma Avenue will be affected. And I actually reached out to the engineer to get a more precise accounting. It's literally a portion of the right-of-way, just off of Patton Street, and that small tiny sliver is still under the requirement of the Ohio Department of Transportation to have us sign off on the project. And the project is a repaving of 68 from Xenia all the way to 71.
Thank you very much. We have a motion, please, as an emergency, to authorize the city manager?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mills. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
That is all I have this evening.
Thank you very much. Anything for the city manager this evening, please?
Thank you very much. Is there any way in the resurfacing program, I know the dollars are spent, but 42 was redone last year. That stretch between Cincinnati Avenue, where it was, and Second Street, right there in front of SolarFlare, you got about 100-yard stretch right there that is absolutely horrible. And I don't know if we can come up with another 100 yards of asphalt, but that stretch is just horrible with holes.
Yeah, we can certainly look into that. We may have a little bit of additional resources available as budgeted, based on where this budget amount came in.
Yeah, just, you know, all 42 is done, and then you get, and that one stretch gets used a ton as people come up Cincinnati Avenue then, and...
We can certainly look at it.
That's all I have.
Thank you. And anything else for the city manager, please? Seeing none, Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item this evening, scheduled bills in the amount of $374,480.69.
Thank you very much. We have a motion, please, to pay our bills this evening.
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Smith. Second, please. Second by the Vice President. Any discussion or question on any of the bills, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, we have an order submitting Xenia codified ordinances, Part II, Administrative Code Title 12, Fees, Chapter 298, Fee Schedule for Codified Orders, as originally addressed by Vice President Long.
So moved. Move for passage, second, please?
Second.
Second by the mayor. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Councilman.
Thank you very much. I will be voting no on the fee schedule, due to the fact that the water and sewer rates are increasing, and 36% of our administrative buildings are going to be paid for through water and sewer fees.
Any other discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
No.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, we have an order submitting Xenia codified ordinances, Part II, Administrative Code Title 2, General Provisions, Chapter 208, Contracts and Purchasing, to authorize the City of Xenia to participate in the National Joint Powers Alliance Cooperative Purchasing Program, originally addressed by Vice President Long.
So moved. Move for passage, second, please?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman, or excuse me, seconded by Councilwoman Mills. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
No.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'd just like to commend Detective Holly Clay. She received an award today, as the Outstanding Police Officer for the County for the Year from the County Prosecutor's Office, for her work with domestic violence and domestic violence victims. So, it's quite an honor.
Thank you very much. Anything for our law director this evening, please? Seeing none, moving to summary of action items. Any update to the action items, Mr. City Manager?
Just one update. We had originally scheduled to bring back the MOU assignment, Summit Kent Bridges of Hope tonight. However, after additional discussion with the city planner, we had realized that we needed to take their amenities back to BZA, and in deference to BZA, we wanted to make sure that we allowed them to, you know, follow their procedures before we bring them back to council. So, we do have that prepared. It's under review right now. We need to get the law department or our insurance company on review, and we will be bringing that back for action next meeting.
Thank you very much.
I have one question. I'm sorry, I should have asked this sooner. I know we have a hydrant flushing schedule. Is there any kind of schedule that comes out on street sweeping? Because I always seem to have my car parked in front of my house. When they come by it, so then they bypass it, and I, if I knew where they were coming, I would pull it in the driveway?
They have a little more ad hoc schedule, but let's, we can look into that. It would certainly be a service if we could put it out there, a little bit better, a little bit better awareness, yeah. We'll look into that.
It's okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any additions to the list, please, from my colleagues? Seeing none, reading of communications and discussion. Councilman Cow.
Thank you very much. Just like to remind the citizens, registration for Xenia Wee Buck's Football and Cheer Program. The last two registration dates are Thursday, April 30th, and Friday, May 8th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at McKinley School. There will be no late registrations, so need to get every, all the cheerleaders, first grade through sixth grade, and football players out to get registered. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mills, please.
Thank you. I have three things to speak about. First is First Fridays is coming up. It is going to be on May 1st, so I encourage everyone to come down, and if you come down to the city one, we will have flyers with all the summer activities that Bracka represents. We have six music in the parks, three movies in the parks, and a fishing derby that will definitely be on a flyer, so we'd love to hand it out. You can put it on your refrigerator, and don't miss the activities that Xenia plans and prepares for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was one.
I say that was...
Two, opening day, YRC, May 2nd at 9:30 a.m. It's a great opportunity to come out and support our youth with YRC, and also Heater from the Dayton Dragons will be there, so it's a great opportunity to be able to do that. And three is, please don't forget to vote on May 6th. Please support the Xenia Community Schools. They are asking for renewals. There's no additional new taxes, so please remind yourself to go out and vote on May 6th. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Sorry to interrupt, if I may, just to piggyback on Councilwoman Mills about First Fridays, we are scheduling to close the portion of Detroit Street from Church to Main in conjunction with several of our First Fridays this year, so we'll try to put some information out to the public. But again, we're doing this, one, to facilitate the car show at a better location, two, because we are, we do have some concerns about pedestrian safety. We feel like that will provide some calming. So again, we'll post notices and whatnot, but the public should expect some inconvenience that night during First Fridays for anyone traveling down to Detroit.
And the hours are 5 to 9.
Thank you very much. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to correct Councilwoman Mills. I think you can vote on May 6th, but it won't count. I think the election's actually May 5th.
Are you serious? I'm looking at the calendar, trying my best. I'm sorry.
Because I was going to bring it up.
Please, please correct me, it is May 5th.
Yeah, yeah. But again, he can go. They won't be there, but you can try to vote. But that's great. And not to make light of her comment, it is real important, I think, to vote. I think council made an endorsement of Xenia Community Schools for their ballot renewal. I believe it is no new increased taxes, it's a renewal. And, you know, you got to look at, we, they've done a phenomenal job opening up five elementary schools several years ago that are, that are just doing a really good job there, so that's really important. And also, a reminder, May 16th is Volunteer Day, is that right?
Yes, it is.
So I know we got a couple Boy Scouts here in the audience, maybe they'll volunteer for that, but I plan to be there. That's a big weekend. I think St. Bridget has a festival, too. There's the 5Ks going on, so I'm glad the weather's hopefully going to turn warmer. Yeah, I don't know how to dress. I'm wearing like long-sleeve shirts, and it's the end of April, but again, it's just nice to see things green up as quickly as they have, and just advise people to have a great, safe spring and a summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. At last meeting, I wanted to recognize a Xenia student who was an honors student at Central State University on their honors day program, and his name was Cody Brannon. So, we want to congratulate Cody. He received a gold cord, and I was certainly proud of him, and his mother was in attendance, so we both were smiling. And then also, congratulate Xenia Schools on their groundbreaking. I don't know if that was, was that since last meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so we already know about that. The Xenia Schools Foundation held their Hall of Honor this past weekend, and it was just an excellent program, five inductees, so congratulations to them as well. And then, a couple days ago, I attended the Red Cross Luncheon at the Dayton Art Institute, and I haven't heard yet, one of the Xenia people was nominated for an award, and I don't know if she received that award yet, because I had to leave to get somewhere else. That evening, I attended the library volunteer luncheon, and that was held at the Career Center. I participated in the show cause interview at Wilberforce University, and as you know, we're trying to make sure they are accredited, and so individuals were invited to attend and answer questions about the university. My group had current and former mayors, there were lawyers, there were regional chamber officers, pastors. Our Xenia superintendent was there, as well as a treasurer and board member, and several business people, and it was really a great meeting that we had, and everyone really showed a lot of support for the institution. So we still, it's probably going to be another four to six months before anything's known for sure. Then today, at Central State University, they had their Community Health Day, and it was really well organized. They had activities at the field, walking or running, they had dancing, they had a spin class, whatever that is. What is that?
I was sick.
Oh, okay. And Green Memorial Hospital was there to do health screenings, so that was great. And then, we want to remind everybody that on Friday, the Arbor Day program will be held at Franklin Park, and they're going to be planting a new tree there. And on Wednesday, the 29th, is Community Action Day at Shiny Park, and that will be at 11 o'clock. That's on a Wednesday. So that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice President.
All right, thank you. I too want to congratulate the winners of the Xenia Schools Hall of Fame, especially the two I know, which is Mark Manley and Dr. Dilliplane. Not able to attend that event because we had the father-daughter dance at my daughter's school. I want to congratulate a couple of them. One, I want to thank the Ohio River Road Runners Group Association. The mayor was there. They held the 48th Annual Marathon in Xenia on the 11th. That is the oldest marathon in Ohio, and there's every bit of a few thousand people down. And people don't think that has an economic impact on our city. They weren't trying to get into a restaurant right after that race. We even waited in line at a fast food place for...
I heard there were 1,600 people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd go on forever. So, I want to thank them for picking Xenia to be their home. People come from out of state to run that race, because it's one of the qualifying events for the Boston Marathon. It's also one of the flattest qualifying events for the Boston Marathon. I was able to actually go out to Simon Kent, and they were doing some video productions, raising awareness for the bridges of the whole project, and they have some encouraging news that they're hoping to work with the city and trying to get some of the partial uses open, some funding in place even before that they had really anticipated it, so that's some exciting news. And then, I want to congratulate Xenia Kids and Robots, Excar. They participated in their first robotics competition at the Nutter Center in the fighting robotics competition. They've done robotics before, but this is the first year in the fighting with the Ohio Robotics Incorporated, which I think the city had helped sponsor those events in place. They did not get into the finals, but they learned a lot for their first time, and they will be competing again at the Nutter Center in November, and I'll share information there as people should go out and support. These kids are all from Xenia, and they work every week to design and build pretty impressive remote-controlled robot with a, some weapons and things on it. I don't, I think it could really hurt somebody. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As for myself, I would just encourage you also, please go to the polls on May the 5th and vote for the Xenia Schools renewal levies that, as has been said, are no new taxes. Also, from our schools, a couple of notable events this last week, and one coming in terms of, I believe there were a couple of signings for college scholarships that took place this week. I don't know exactly whom, I just knew that there were a couple, and that I believe, I know I'll get this wrong, my daughter will tell me which one it is, on Saturday, I believe, they are going to the state competition for band. So, that is something that not many schools get the opportunity to do, and I'm very proud of Xenia's band, that they have put together such a good season, that they were marked